Monday. Hey, before we get going, I might have to, any of you guys follow the Mariners at all?
A tiny bit.
A tiny bit. Did you, are you aware of the, the guy that caught the Cal Raleigh home run ball in Detroit?
Oh, huh.
He was a, a, it was pretty much, cause he had this dump sixty-one shirt. They call Cal Raleigh the dump dumpster. And he, and he had this dump sixty-one shirt and the foul ball come out and he caught it. And he's been in all kinds of interviews and all that. He's had Canada calling.
Oh, my gosh.
All kinds of, he's from Longview.
Oh, I did see that. Yeah.
Yeah.
From Longview.
He, he's also my youngest boy.
Oh.
Yeah, when, when I married Barbie, I inherited three. And I think, well, he likes to go by Jameson now, but Jamie was, I think, five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How cool.
Yeah. I saw that catch and I just texted her. I said, nice catch. Who is your coach?
I heard that when he caught that ball, he got that ball and he ripped that shirt off. It had dumped sixty-two.
He had sixty-two under.
Another T-shirt on.
The, and then he got to meet Cal Raleigh and he offered the ball back to him, but he, he said, no, you keep it. He signed it and he signed a bat for him and gave him that.
Oh, my God.
And the Mariners wanted the shirt, so he gave the shirt to the Mariners.
Oh, nice.
And then for the last game, the fifteen inning game, they flew him up from Vegas to, for that. I know it. It's been kind of a whirlwind.
That is so cool.
Fifteen minutes away.
I know it. Exactly.
Yeah.
That is so cool. I know Cal Raleigh, he does the youth clinic every summer. My son wants to go next summer.
Yeah.
Do. He does a baseball clinic. Like, that would be neat.
Very cool. Anyway. Little bit sidereal. I guess we're ready to go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Good morning. Gina James and Carol Harrison with Health and Human Services. We're just gonna do our budget workshop this morning. So we're gonna go over what funds we have, human services budget, and then health department budget. So we, just as a reminder, we're kind of two departments under one roof, so we'll do each one here. So this is so cool. Okay. So these are the funds that are in our department. So you can see in green are the human services funds and kind of the different program areas that get plopped into those funds. And on the health department side, we have one fund with the different program areas. Human services, just kind of as a reminder, is primarily grants or local funds for specific purposes. We, neither health or human services receive general funds. And so we are solely operate off of grants, fees, revenue, other local revenue, those types of things. So we, in human services, our, our budget is kind of, we look at it two different ways. One, from the county budget side, where we have to try to estimate our revenues and expenditures based on our state grants and what that looks like will, and the local revenue. For example, you know, document recording fees and veteran relief funding. We could do our best estimate at what we might think the revenue will be. And then we might make changes throughout the year based on actuals. We have two social service coordinators in human services and one accounting specialist. And then we have a few shared positions, like Carol and myself, a finance manager, that type of thing. And we all bill our time directly to the programs we work in. So if I, you know, next week I'll spend a few hours here talking about the local homeless housing plan. Why bill all that time to the CHG grant for that? So we all bill it directly. Um, and then this is just a really high level overview of our expenditures and our revenue for 2026, broken out by the different funds. Again, it's based on what we know some grant contract amounts are and what we anticipate some to be and projections of different revenue sources. So it may change. And as you know, too, we sometimes don't spend everything, you know, all of those. We kind of have lots of caveats in the human services budget for those reasons of the state grants and different funding cycles and not utilizing everything and all of those things. So it's the best we can do with what we have. Is there any questions on human services before we do health department? We typically, just as a reminder too, if we're bringing a specific program for discussion or review, we will bring that specific program's budget. So that's the other way we look at it. So like veterans relief, for example, if we're talking about veterans relief and, and spending in veterans relief, we would bring that specific revenue, that budget information, because it also includes like what might be as a fund balance and things like that. So same with like document recording fees or our other programs. We would look at those specific budgets individually when we have those discussions. So.
But for, for purposes of discussion, both lines, both your expenditures and revenue on each of those categories are all estimates, correct?
Yeah. So, yeah. So the revenue is based on what we have either already signed contracts for or what we anticipate getting veterans relief, for example, is what we anticipate the revenue to look like in twenty-six. And you know, the, yeah, it's, it's an estimate based on last year's actuals to this point. So we use that as an estimate for the next year. And like I said, if there's significant changes throughout the year, we may come and do, you know, do an amendment, a budget amendment to adjust if we need to.
So right at the minute, it looks like veterans relief, you're expecting to spend more than you have revenues.
Yeah. Yeah. That spending has gone up. Yep. And the assistance. So, yeah, we're watching that pretty closely. I know we do have a pretty, a pretty hefty fund balance, but we certainly don't want to get in the habit of spending more than we're getting in. So that is something we're looking at pretty closely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Health department.
All right. Health department. Good morning. Carol Harrison, Health and Human Services. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the health department budget, which is all in one fund, which is one forty-three oh one. So unlike in human services where we have just a couple of staff and most of the work and the funding goes out in the community, in the health department side, it's internally, the work is done through staff in the health department out in the community. So it's a little bit of a different model. Go ahead. So we did talk a couple of months back when we brought our fees forward for consideration back in, I think it was in July. The last several years, probably the last six years, the health department had a really healthy fund balance. And over time, we have spent that down due to increased costs. A little bit less revenue coming in, haven't raised our fees since twenty nineteen, haven't been getting any general funds. So that's kind of brought us to where we were this year with having to make some pretty big changes in our budget. So this is a high level overview of the health department budget. You can see in twenty twenty-five, our expenditures were about, will be about three point eight million, revenue is a little bit less than that. So we're using some more of that fund balance. And then you can see where we're planning for twenty twenty-six, a drastic change in that budget of about fifteen percent, lowering it down about, about a half a million dollars. So I'll, we'll kind of show you what that looks like in the next couple of slides. So this one is, you know, this is not new information for you, but this is where one of the increases in costs that we've seen, just like all the other county departments, the increase in internal services, insurance, all those types of things. So that's one thing that we really had to take into consideration as we were looking at our budget. So you can see a pretty big jump in a lot of those there. Uh, this one, here's where we started making some changes when we were looking at our budget for twenty twenty-six. We've dropped another motor pool vehicle for next year. We've slowly been lowering the number of motor pool vehicles we've had based on need. And we've just continued to monitor that very closely. We had nine cars back in twenty twenty-four. We've lowered that down to eight. And then next year we'll be going down to seven. So we've just slowly worked on some efficiencies there for scheduling motor pool vehicles. We also did a review of our cell phones and our hotspots, knocked that down quite a bit. Looked at our program supplies and how we could lower some of those costs. We've planned a drastic decrease in our contract with R Y C Analytics next year. So that's Shannon Hoskins that sometimes analyzes public health data for us. We've knocked that down from ten thousand to three thousand dollars. We've, we've not been using her that much this past year and a half or so anyway, so that worked out okay. And we've knocked down our group B water testing. This is where we help those group B systems test their water for arsenic and other contaminants. That's primarily due to, excuse me, due to a change at the state level in our state contract. So that went down. We are planning to discontinue that water testing program in the middle of next year when the, at the end of the funding period for the state contract. We also took a good close look at a lot of our computer software and licenses and found where we could eliminate a few of those. And then the big item there, travel and training, we have reduced our budget down almost ninety percent. And then the big item there, travel and training, um, we have reduced our budget down almost 90% for travel and training. Just knocking it down to what is absolutely required for licensure and certification. So like our nurses have to maintain their certifications. Excuse me, and their licensures. And then we have some environmental health folks, like the septic folks that have to maintain their licensure to be able to do the work. But you'll see in the yellow down there at the bottom, got a little bit of an asterisk. We do have some funding that the state is allocating to us. It will be in our next amendment to our consolidated contract. And some of that funding may be able to be used to cover some travel and training for staff. So we'll be looking more into that and we'll talk more about that when our next amendment comes from the state. So that could help backfill some of that travel and training costs. As well as the staff's time actually participating in training, which is pretty cool.
Quick question on group B.
Yeah.
The, the state has changed some of that. And then I think you put it, like it's the state getting rid of it and we won't have it next year.
They drastically reduced the funding and we anticipate it'll get cut even further this coming year.
So they'll still be able to get their stuff tested. It just won't be it free.
Correct.
It would just be a cost.
Yeah. And they would go out themselves. Right now, we kind of act as a middleman for them, giving them bottles and they can submit it to the labs themselves. But at some point it'll be.
They probably get that from a lab too.
Yeah, exactly.
If they're over there in analytics.
Yeah, they can do that themselves. Yes. Right. So a little peek at some revenues. We've got some small miscellaneous state grants, including that group B water funding that we've seen actually an increase in some of them as a net, but, and then big one that we saw this year for the current allocation of that pot of foundational public health services funding. That was cut for us about almost 25% for this, the state fiscal year. So starting July 1. So that went down 352,000. That next line there, that public health infrastructure grant, that's what I mentioned in the previous slide about travel and training. That may be an opportunity for us to fund different things. And we actually will bring some more conversation about that to the board. But Gina, did you want to add anything about FPHS?
Yeah. So we, um, we are looking at ways to utilize that, that funding a little bit more internally to help with some of the additional costs in other areas. We, this last year, um, the board approved a grant with Laura Columbia School Gardens, about $150,000 of that funding. That contract will expire the end of December this year. They're interested in opportunities for continued funding. We, we have a suggestion with that. And I, I've talked to them a little bit about it, but maybe dropping from 150 down to 75,000 as a way to kind of reduce that amount for them. And knowing too, we're, we're a little bit not nervous, but trying to be aware that it's likely there may be additional cuts to FPHS in the future, like, like we saw this last year. And so we're just thinking about that as well, that there may be further reductions in that funding. So that's something that's on our radar. We don't have to have a decision on that today, but just wanted to mention that. And like I said, their current contract expires the end of December. And so we will be looking to have a conversation. I think they are, I guess they are interested in some level of, of funding for next year. So wanted to get that on your radar too.
Yeah. That's the, you know, when you live and breathe off of grants and stuff like that, that's one of the risks you, you, you take. And it's, I think it's a good, good program. It's just if, if you're gonna live and breathe off of these type of things, that's one of the things you gotta know as an entity that the state or the feds can say, can scratch it out and you're, you're not there.
Yeah. And then the last line there shows, um, based on those fee increases that we put into our fee schedule back in August, that, that increased our revenue about a little over a hundred thousand dollars for the year. And that was for environmental health and then birth and death certificates as well. So. So the biggest change in our budget is personnel costs. In 2025, uh, this year, we have a total in health and human services of 31 FTE. For the next calendar year, we'll be lowering that down to 26. And the primary change is in the health department. We have one position that is currently funded fully in the health department that will be splitting between the two departments because they've been doing work on both sides. So that shifts the cost of that position halfway into human services. We have two folks that are retiring next year. We will not fill those once they retire and we will eliminate those two positions. And then we also have two vacant positions currently, and we've already submitted the form to eliminate those two from our budget. And then lastly, but the biggest impact, I think for folks is we did do one reduction in force. So we did eliminate one individual to get us where we needed to be. So, um, yeah. And so this is just two personal changes over time. So you can see where we've been over time. Back in 2017, we had 20, what did I read that closer, 27 FTE, 36, oh, 36 and a half FTE. And then we'll be down to 26 here next year. So you can see where it kind of peaked in during COVID because we had to hire a couple of extra nurses during that time, but down quite a bit in our FTE over time. So it's a lot. But we had to, we had to do it. So. Any questions?
I don't really have any questions. Just comment that you, you guys actually took it serious and did a good job with it. I know it's not easy, but I, it's appreciated.
Yeah. It was, it was probably one of the, one of the toughest budgets I think I've seen. I think back in 2011, we had to cut, we, we did seven, um, seven reduction in forces. It was tough. That was, that was the worst I've ever seen. It was tough. But.
Good morning, Kathy Funk Baxter. One of the items that I wanted to bring to your attention and they did talk about it was Veterans Relief Fund. A little research was done on this and we have an opportunity, um, if you choose, the revenue could be shifted for one year on the Veterans Relief Fund over to the general fund. And, um, and it's based upon how much they have and their fund balance. And, and so they do have a fund balance that would probably allow this to happen. And so I'm just asking for your permission to look into this and to see if this might be a one time and it, it can only be done once. So that we can assist the general fund with our budget. Or at least put it on your radar for now.
Yeah. That's a kind of a, a tough one for me because those funds are set for veterans and we're going to use it for other than veterans. I mean, I, I get we're in a need, but taken from them because we can't figure out our own budget is, that's what it feels like a little bit, right? That's what it feels like to me too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not crazy about this idea.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to bring it up. It's as, as an option and that's my job. I'm going to be bringing you
I know.
Some other ones after we.
That's one of the things we appreciate about you, if you, you look at everything, but I'm not sure I can do that.
Okay. And then the other thing.
Thank you for the research.
You're welcome. Well, David Berger did the research and, and also included them in the information. So, the other thing is, um, before they had put their budget together, we made some decisions last week related to the opioid funds. So I'm going to, based upon last week's information, make some changes for this budget related to the revenues from opioid.
Yeah. Cause that'll change what they have. Yeah.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure, go on the record saying what they presented today because they had their PowerPoints already and they did that before. We did last week's decision to move the drug court positions for one year over to fund off of opioid funds. And then we also made a decision for the interest income that's been accumulated on opioid funds to utilize those for the PA's office and for the Office of Public Defenders, again, for one year. So those are going to be changes.
Okay.
That I'll make.
Any other questions for us?
Good slideshow.
Thanks.
Yeah.
That's Carol.
I think me and you had a short conversation. We do have quite a bit of money in this Veterans Relief Fund. And I think after, I think our conversation was the one, let's get through this budget year and then maybe first part of next year, take a look and see how we can best utilize that for veterans instead of it just sitting there and then
Yeah.
always worried about it.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll get something scheduled the first part of the year, new year.
And I think one of the reasons you see the shift going from spending more than this coming in from where it was, is this past year, we added an additional veterans facility getting reimbursed for their rent expense or whatever. And then the, the assistance amounts have all been increased pretty much in the last couple of years. So that's why we kind of see that flip a little bit.
Yeah. And I don't think any of us disagree is that you should look at those assistance amounts on a regular basis and make sure we're keeping up with everything around here.
For sure.
It's hard to do.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
I see it says, IT five-year plan, Travis online or somebody online? Oh. So it's, we're almost there. Okay. Prepping up on it. Yeah, we can recess till he comes in. We're probably just five minutes away or so. Did you see this China trade? Bring it.
Bring it.
Come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT.
Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into.
Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into. Five year plan, IT. Okay, we'll come back out of recess, move into.
Okay, we'll get started. Kathy Fun Baxter, Finance Director. Travis is here to present a PowerPoint and. Is it over on the thumb drive?
About 10 minutes ago. Good morning.
So Travis is gonna start. This is, this is, we had presented to you previously about the cost allocation and how much it is and how we do those. And he's going to talk about more longer range plans. I'm turning it over to Travis.
Good morning. Travis Fiskini, IT Director. And, and planning for this, it was a little unclear exactly what you would want to hear, whether it was really about plans for five years or whether it was about budget, etc. So I will tell you that what I'm doing here is focusing on things that impact the budget over the next five years. Things that don't impact the budget not so much because there are things that will be done that are done with staff and don't require capital expense, etc. So I'm not necessarily highlighting those things here today. All right. So jumping in, if you look at the images there, I highlight two images, one from a skyscraper in San Francisco. One from a beach house in North Carolina. Very different, but my question to you is what do they have in common? Took a lot of planning. It did. The, the thing I want to highlight here, while they have some things in common, like they're both residences, you know, even the skyscrapers, condominiums and residences. The, the primary thing I'm focusing on today is that they both took a good foundation. And in both of these cases, the foundation is suspect. So that skyscraper, for example, in San Francisco is starting to lean. And it's at 20 plus inches. When it hits 40 inches, 39 inches, catastrophic things could happen. And it's moving at about three inches per year. In the case of the beach house, that beach house has already been eroded, is already in the ocean and no longer exists. So the things that I'm going to talk to you about here today are really about ensuring that we have a good foundation for the things that we do in the IT department. So the things we're going to focus on in the coming years are probably three things: empowering users, modernization or modernizing what we do and how we do it, and reducing risk. The ways that we're going to look at that and the way that they will impact the department are broken down in the agenda here. And each one of these, I'll explain in more detail as we go through it. The first one being people. I'm going to show you the org chart next. If you'll move the slide, please. You know, last week there was some discussion about changes and positions. We requested another position to backfill someone who's retiring. So I highlight that here. The vacant positions, technically vacant positions are in yellow. So one of them is the new one that we're requesting, the ERP analyst position. The other one is the ERP manager, which has been vacant. It's on the right. In the middle is technically vacant, but currently occupied by a contractor. The name is there, Andre Poco. And then on the left, that position is technically vacant, but we do have a new hire who's starting on the 16th in a few days. So we're making good progress on filling those positions, but that just helps you understand the positions that are there today, who's in the positions currently. The future is hard to say, so I don't have another slide talking about that. But in terms of people and what it's going to take, one of the things that is important is to make sure that we have the right partners to be successful. And there's a gap in expertise at times. And so we've been developing the correct partners. We had one partner in the, in, in the past couple of years who is no longer a partner. We were paying them a recurring fee on a monthly basis. We've moved to another model with a couple of other partners who we pay for services as needed. That's been more cost beneficial and we have access to more talent with deeper expertise. So instead of a handful of experts, we've got probably dozens and probably close to 100 experts available, depending on what the skills are that we need. So that's working out well so far in multiple ways. There's certainly an opportunity for additional partners and we need additional partners, particularly in the area of PeopleSoft. And so we're in the process currently of talking to multiple partners and trying to find the right partners for that also. So that's a key focus as we move forward in, in order to do what needs to be done. In the coming years. Getting to be more specific, I'm going to talk about the IT infrastructure. So IT infrastructure for your general awareness is the hardware that you would see when you walk into our server room. Generally speaking, it's also things you would see in the network closets around the buildings that we have. And that is basically the physical gear that makes IT work within the county. With the exception of the endpoint devices like your laptops and things you see in front of you now, tablets, etc. So there's major funding here, which is one of the reasons why I list it first. Because that infrastructure is really the foundation of a lot of the services that we have here. And there's significant investment being placed into that in the coming year. So there's, I lumped 25 and 26 together because in some cases, things are going to be, we're funded in 25. And move to the budget, but we may not actually spend them until 26, etc. So that's why I lumped those two together. And so there's a 1.3 million expected to do a significant number of enhancements. And that would basically be refreshing most of the infrastructure that's in the server room from the server side and from the storage side. And it's also the backups. So that's a significant amount of hardware, but also licensing. And it basically is the storage for most of the companies, most of the organization's data. In 2027, we'll continue to make some enhancements to the room because it's, that's needed. You know, there's things like fire suppression that may not be effective right now, for example, that need to be changed. So we'll continue making some changes there. We'll also add capacity to storage. We'll rightsize that. We don't want to over purchase. Capacity. So there's funds in there so that we can rightsize and adjust funds. After we do an initial implementation, we may need more in certain places. And that's why there's funds being spent on the similar resources in the following year.
When we had the presentation for IT equipment, we had, we had one of our departments submit a special request. Related to these first floor of this building not having adequate. Ability for people to pull up Wi-Fi, pull up on their phones or, or get internet. And so I was asking the question from Travis if that was include, that type of thing would typically be included in infrastructure.
So, so I was not aware of that specific request, but there is an assumption that there's going to be a requirement to make some changes to wireless. Either filling dead spots or replacing hardware with newer hardware. And so over the next number of years, there's a small amount of money allocated to that each year. So we can use that for downstairs if that's the area of greatest need, that sort of thing. In, in the following years, in, in the out years, years, because a lot of the detail that I'm using or basing this off of is, is the next year and the following year. That's where we have the most detail and where we spent the most time planning. Years three through five, because I was asked to, to put together something that represented your, you know, five years. There's less detail there. It's hard to predict the future with technology. Technology changes very quick. But I do make some assumptions. There are some things we know. We know, for example, that wireless access, you know, those protocols are going to continue to change as the buildings get renovated, users move around, there's still going to be gaps. So that's one of those things that we'll need to continue addressing. Server infrastructure usually lasts five years or more. So if all of that's replaced in the next year or so, then that'll last for the next five years. We talked about this a little bit in a previous meeting not too long ago, but the intent is to replace the existing infrastructure today with hardware that's on prem. That's in this building. And in the future refresh, what I would recommend or propose is that instead of refreshing roughly five years down the road with more hardware on prem. We move that to the cloud. Effectively, the cloud is someone else's computers that aren't located here. If we move it there. Generally, that's considered to be the, the, the common operating model for multiple reasons. And we're not at the point where we're ready And we're not at the point where we're ready to do that now. Just there's a lot, a lot of changes that would take a lot of changes in addition to things that are already happening. But I think in five years, we'll be in a better position for that. Using the call, walk, run methodology. Instead of making that major transition with our primary servers, primary resources, the intent would be to do that change with disaster recovery as an interim step. So we would probably plan to do that in the coming year or two years and make that change so that we use similar services in the cloud for disaster recovery. We can fail over should we have a catastrophic event here, and we can basically operate out of another data center temporarily. And that would, the skills, the methodology of migration, preparation, becoming familiar, the learning curve, all of that, we would be doing in a non-user impacted environment. And then ultimately, a couple of years down the road, that could be transferred to the production workloads, which is a little bit more critical and noticeable when those changes are made. Am I making sense? So far, so good.
Yeah, I understand it because I I went through it with my previous deal where everything was on. We held it and then we went to cloud and it did give us some advantage in disaster recovery because then what they had, we had. You know.
How often do we do backup of our whole system? Backups are done generally daily. Some things are done a little bit more frequently, but the the primary goal right now is to make sure everything's protected daily. I am going to come to that in an upcoming slide with more detail.
Okay.
So moving to the next one, O and M for short, or operations and maintenance. Or what I would recommend we call it is optimization and modernization. The old O and M, I think, is is probably outdated. And that's got a number of things inside of that. It's not so much financial, the impact isn't isn't significant. But it will allow us to provide better services to users and things like doing improved network monitoring, app monitoring, that sort of thing to make sure services are available and reliable is one of those things. We want to evaluate satellite internet services. It's part of modernization. We know that that's available. We know that there's certain circumstances where that could be very useful, even at the county or in disaster recovery events. So things like that just take time. And so it isn't a significant amount of cost in terms of resources other than labor and service potentially. Labor meaning time either with internal resources or professional services of a third party. But it's relatively insignificant for that one specifically. In process, we're already in process of migrating phone services, working with a vendor to move from legacy copper lines to new, more modern communication protocols. And so that's the, that's the PRI to SIP conversion. There's also discussions, we've started discussing moving some existing copper lines into a wireless service. It's just becoming very difficult for telecommunications companies to support the copper services. So those are the migrations that that are underway. Additionally, there's other more technical things like extending the DMZ, demilitarized zone, effectively public facing web servers and to our virtual infrastructure. One of the things that maybe is more impactful that and less technical is we we made an investment in the Cisco phone system and procured that. And the lifespan of that is probably seven or 10 years and maybe more. And that was only a couple of years ago. We're still improving that system. At some point in the next five years, I would anticipate we'll be approached by our vendor and will try to persuade us to move to their hosted solution. Whether or not that will make sense, we'll evaluate that. I put it on here because it's hard to know at what point we'll reach a tipping point and that'll make sense. I suspect it's closer to the five year mark down the road, maybe even more, given the fact that we've already made a capital investment of three quarters of a million or so in hardware to support that. And then finally, I guess there's another one there, which is to complete migration. We have a couple of physical servers that could be migrated to to virtual servers. Just becomes easier to support. Simplification consolidation, just as a general practice, is a good idea. All right, next slide. Business continuity and disaster recovery. I highlight here with the image on the top right as a reminder, you know, this is really about sending our data to the cloud. This is where we start making a big step to do that. Our disaster recovery services today within the county are very, very limited. We're at a level of high risk largely because we don't protect our data off site. And we're in the process of improving data protection and backups to your question a minute ago. We're working with a vendor today, I say today, but within for for a number of weeks and months even, to help us audit those backups and to upgrade the application that that does that and to ensure that those are working reliably and consistently, et cetera. But the primary purpose of that initial goal, that initial work is to make sure that it's working nightly and we can recover from an event as long as everything within the buildings within our on premise environment is reliable. If we had a catastrophic event, fire, theft, something like that, water damage to electrical equipment, et cetera, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have a way to recover. That would be a big risk. That's what we want to deal, that's what we want to mitigate by moving to the cloud or replicated data to the cloud. The, I list here the cost of of the things that are being done in total at thirty six K. And I and I point out that I think that's understated. There was a little bit of, I think, a misunderstanding potentially between myself and the finance department when we're communicating about that. And so I think the estimates are probably higher than that. But I also think that in another area, I found cost savings that will probably equal the the additional costs required. So I don't think there's a budget change needed. I just think that that number specifically is probably understated and wanted to call that out. So we we're going to need some consulting services. We're working with a vendor currently to do the backups, as I mentioned. We'll also work with one to implement the disaster recovery to cloud service and to make sure that that's working properly. And other than that, one other thing there to call out is that as we move to the cloud, we're going to become more redundant, we're sorry, more reliable in our network connectivity. And so one of the things we want to do, the one, one of the things that should be done there is to improve our network redundancy. So that if we lose a carrier or we lose a connection because of a backhoe or just because of a service provider's maintenance, that we can use another one. So I list that there also as a general best practice. Cost is relatively low. You know, we're not talking about a high monthly recurring cost for those as much as it is, you know, a dozen hours or dozens of hours to implement and test to make sure it's working properly. Next one is physical security. Excuse me. So physical security is is relative, is funded from the IT reserve. And I'm focusing here on the hardware components because we know that the security cameras that are around the county are relatively out of date. Some of them have their own security vulnerabilities. And they're, they're ready for a refresh, with the exception of those that have been put in place, for example, at HOJ within the past year or maybe the coroners. So there are some that have been replaced relatively recently, but there's a number that have not. And so there's a, there's money in here allocated to replace the two or three dozen cameras that are out of date. Then there's some money that was added to a budget with the intent. This year, I suspect it's going to be next year. Things are moving slower than previously anticipated to upgrade the building security, potentially fire, burglar alarm specifically. And that was put into the reserve. I think that was new this year, Kathy, keep me honest. The intent there is to make sure that we have funds to do the work, but that we also have the ability to make sure that we have an adequate alarm system. Because ours is is known to be dated. There's a, an interest in in having a centrally managed lock system. And there's been multiple discussions among multiple interested parties with that. There's been some work done there. I don't think there's a consensus, but I know that I don't necessarily know the latest on that. So I list that simply as TBD. There are funds put in the budget there intended to be more than two years out to implement that. So maybe that'll be pulled in, maybe that'll be done sooner. I'm not sure. I just don't have the latest on it when I put together the presentation. So more, more research needed there, but there's money in the reserve or intended to be collected for the reserve to do that. There's no money allocated for security camera expansion. From time to time, we get requests to add things like security cameras in one place or another. That's hard to predict. So I would assume that if we need security cameras in additional locations, that would come out of a SIP fund or something like that when the time comes. All right, on to cybersecurity. This slide could have been very large. There's lots of things in in process here. It goes back to my earlier point. Many of them have minor impact on budget because they're mostly about labor. I do highlight the top things here that have a, an impact on on budget. Endpoint management or managed action and response, depending on what you want to call it, was replaced this year. Over the course of the year, that project is nearly complete. So it's probably, you know, better than ninety percent of the way done. And the service that we're using there is going to be a recurring service. And that's going to add to the monthly expense, or sorry, the annual expense. That was probably overstated previously in our, in our budget. When we actually contracted the vendor, it was, it was, it was probably instead of being an expected fifty thousand or so extra per year, it's closer to twenty five thousand or so. My great and leverage additional data protection. So that's one of those where we've previously had Veronis, that's been brought to the board a couple of times. Veronis is a product that helps us identify sensitive data or with healthcare records, that sort of thing, social security numbers, helps us understand whether or not that data is protected appropriately, and if it's not, helps us secure it, et cetera. The application is named Veronis. That runs currently and has been in in place for the past three years, running on servers that are hosted here. The vendors model and recommendation and best practice now is to no longer support that in a on prem installation, but to move that to the cloud. And we've done a trial of that, demoed that, and we're in the process of working with them to move that to a cloud service. So within the next month or so, I'll be bringing to you a proposal to move that contract to a, to a SaaS model instead of an on prem model. When I mentioned earlier that that the disaster recovery was understated because it's going to cost more than what was listed there. This was significantly overstated. It was previously suggested and and budgeted for like two hundred and fifty thousand a year with the intent to be the vendor's licensing plus the cost of, yeah, the vendor's licensing. If we had purchased the on prem license, it would have been roughly the same, plus the cost of hardware was relatively net neutral. After negotiation with the vendor, I I believe that that's going to come in at less than half of that. So I think we'll see more than a hundred thousand dollars in savings there, which will help in other areas. Network intrusion is something that we found to be lacking during this past year. We worked with a vendor during incident response. We implemented that. That's in place. We want to continue using that for the for the coming year. And years. There's also, that incident response was directly related to a firewall that provides remote access for employees. That product is becoming end of life. It's known to be insecure and we're going to replace that with a better product, one that's more reliable and safer. That's going to incur an extra cost, and that's going to be roughly thirty thousand per year. We don't historically do vulnerability management in that we don't have a product that scans for vulnerabilities within our environment. Simply said, it's kind of like having a security guard walk around and check for open doors in a physical environment. We don't have something that does that today. There's recommendations from previous security audits at least five years ago in 2019. Out of the the five recommendations they had, for example, one of them was to implement this. It's a very important thing to do and then use the things that it finds and its risk rating to prioritize actions that we take to secure our environments. This is a, an expectation to implement that. We've started evaluating vendors and products to do that with and expect to move forward on that in the coming weeks or months, but we're getting close on that. Then finally, the one that's further out is security incident event management. So there's something that basically records logs activity from various applications or tools and then correlates the things that it sees so that, for example, if it finds, if it finds the door was unlocked at a certain time and it finds, I'm making a loose analogy to to an electric car. If it found that the door was unlocked at a certain time, it found that the ignition started five seconds later. And then it, and then it recorded the data points for the GPS location of where the car was driving. If you, if if the owner was not present, it would say that maybe there's a guest. And then if the owner then reports that the car was stolen, makes it much easier to find. This is effectively similar in that it records and logs activities from various tools and methods so that it can help us identify vulnerabilities and remediate them before they get further than they need to. All right, the next one is modern workplace.
On this slide, is that three seventeen K per year instead of three seventeen?
It it is, sorry. Yeah, there's three hundred seventeen K per year.
Yeah, okay.
Good catch. All right, the next one is modern workplace. There's a lot here. A lot of this is hard to quantify. You know, AI, for example, is one of those. We know, and we've had a recent discussion, we're going to need to implement policy. We know that we're going to need training. We expect that guardrails are going to be appropriate. However, which guardrails is yet to be determined? How many guardrails is yet to be determined? There are lots of security tools and vendors proliferating in the market now because it's a new space and it will continue to happen. What that will cost and how much we're going to need in the coming years unknown. I didn't put him, I didn't put a number in the budget. There is, there is zero in there. But we expect that there's going to have to be something. It's just hard to predict what that is at this point. It's also possible that our existing tools will evolve. And our existing tools may be able to address our need there, just unknown at this point. Soft phones, we're making good progress.
Travis, like, like a email provider we use would have some AI capabilities to format it how you want it type thing. Is that kind of what you're referring to?
Well, this is more from, this is specifically, I was referring to guardrails, meaning from a security standpoint. Not so much from a functionality standpoint. We may need money allocated for a functionality standpoint also. Right? Because you may want a particular type of GPT, a chat service, or you may want to, instead of the one that's included free, you may find that you need one that's specific to your purpose. Or you need access to another data source, et cetera. So for different reasons, we may for functionality need to spend money. I was referencing to the guardrails where, kind of like with text messaging, you know, we could record everybody's text messages. And then if there was an audit, we could then produce those from a tool. Instead, we choose to take a more cost effective approach. And we basically ask, ask folks to render their phone and, you know, take screenshots and so forth to produce those records when needed. In a similar way, we could also use a tool that would record all of the requests that are sent out to the common AI services, chat, GPT, copilot, et cetera. And we could record those and then we could at any point in time ask, you know, what did Travis do on such and such a day and, you know, that and find out what requests I made. Today, we don't have that. Today, we don't expect that we need that. But that may become something that we would want in the future. That would just be a potential guardrail. It would allow auditability or traceability for how it's being, how the service is being used. On to soft phones. Right now, soft phones effectively meaning by that you can use your computer as your phone. You can use a headset, you can talk to the the physical mic that's on your computer laptop. Or you can hook up a headset and you can use. Or you can hook up a headset and you can use it and you can use it from home, you can use it elsewhere. We also want to enable it for mobile devices so that you can make calls using the company resources, county resources. And that way you can also have traceability and auditability. You can also get your voicemails and other things, place calls and make it known as that you're calling from the county as opposed to calling from some other random location. So that work is in progress, making making good progress there. And one of the things we know is going to happen in the future is probably an interest in doing calling with Teams. But that's a TBD. Further out, we don't know, that's going back to the conversation earlier about how we're going to use phones in the future and whether or not we'll continue using our existing service. So we don't expect to use Teams for that in the near future. But we do use Teams today and we want to expand its use for meetings. You know, today we leverage Zoom for lots of meetings here within the this particular room. We could also use Teams for that and they have multiple capabilities. Whether or not that makes sense, we'll have to evaluate. But again, generally speaking, simplification, consolidation of services is good. It's not so much from a from a financial benefit as much as it is from a user support and capability standpoint. So in addition, we want to make sure that we can use it to use AI. So Copilot enables AI enhancements to various things within the Office Suite. So you can use that for things as simple as grammar or spelling or to produce images or to summarize meetings, that sort of thing. So that would be one of those things we would want to do in the near future. Beyond that, we're also talking about and in the process of planning for use of chat so that you can do ad hoc chat to anybody in the county. That's coming soon. And also cross-functional teams. So historically, our teams have been typically siloed and that the intent was to use them within the same department. We want to expand that so you can have cross-department communication. And, you know, that probably makes sense. In some cases where two departments collaborate regularly on on a project, for example, you can make a team and assign users and you can have them work and have a history there. So that's work that's in progress. We expect to see that come to come together soon. What's a little further out as kind of a future phase is sharing data. We want to share data and work on data. So Teams has the capability that when you store your data in SharePoint or in Teams, you can effectively have multiple people access the same document and use it becomes much easier than sharing documents, saving them and saving them from an email, editing them and then reattaching them and resending them. All of that's just a very inefficient workflow. Over time, Microsoft has evolved and now makes it almost difficult not to store it in Teams. We have historically not done that, but that would be something we want to do in the future. And that would be a future phase as we expand that use. Beyond that, we'll want to look at storing data in OneDrive, storing data in SharePoint, ultimately even storing data in Azure and organizing data and and storing it in the cloud with a local copy allows for lots of things. It's less dependence on working from inside the building or having the building be available, et cetera, but it allows people to work anywhere and anytime. And it becomes a much easier working, more efficient working environment when you enable that. But it's also that collaboration is in addition.
So with all this advance in the technology and the AI usage and soft phones, like right now, if I have a phone conversation with somebody, it's not recorded. Is it going to be recorded and all the conversation kept as a what I want to say? A document basically for under freedom of information, it could be discovered?
It's not initially. I think policies and things could be and technology could be used to go that direction, but it's not now.
Okay.
So one of the things that I think is is a is a more common use, instead of doing a full recording and saving that recording for long-term use is typically to transcribe it and summarize it. So the transcribing part has been around for quite a while, but now the next step is to take that and summarize it with AI. So if we have a one-hour meeting, maybe it creates ten thousand words of text. But then to produce a five hundred word summary at the end that talks about, you know, the topics that were discussed and the follow-up action items required, the decisions that were rendered in a in a short summary can be very helpful. And so I think that's probably a much more efficient use of resources because the cost to store a few thousand words of text is much lower than the cost to record, to store a sixty-minute recording and audio. All right, so just moving through some of this a little bit faster. When we when we go to Office three sixty-five, one of the things to consider to enable all of these things is the licensing impact of the Microsoft services. Microsoft offers a higher license level of some of their services. That license will cost us roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is unknown for sure, whether or not it's needed. It provides multiple benefits. It can provide things like enhanced security protection. And we already have a product that does that. And so it it, you know, they want us to use their product. So they create bundles and that, you know, it includes the security protection. But if all we want is to get increased data, data discovery and for records requests, which is a huge reason to consider it. It's a pretty high cost for that purpose because it comes with other benefits. And if we were going to use those two, it would probably be justified. Without that, it's hard to justify. So there's going to be additional evaluation of whether or not that's needed in the future, but it's not currently funded. So there's other things on here that going down down the list that don't have a direct impact on the budget significantly. So I'm going to skip over those and move to the next slide. The next one is really reflecting that the core application, some of the core applications of the county are going to have changes in the next year because they've been on multi-year contracts and most of the major applications we have have multi-year contracts that are expiring. So Microsoft, for example, we have an agreement with them that costs us roughly three hundred fifty thousand a year. That contract is expiring and we'll need to renew that. I we anticipate that the next year's renewal in the budget, we anticipate the next year's renewal will come in line with the current cost. It's unknown for sure. Their licensing models change. Obviously, they're in business for for profit and they are going to do what they can to to require more money than what they did in previous years. And that's when they do those contract renewals, it's a good opportunity for them to do that. So that's just a risk, but I anticipate that we'll be able to do it for similar cost and no additional budgets required. The Microsoft server licenses are not on a recurring contract where we pay an annual maintenance fee or a right to use. It was a one-time purchase. That product is going to stop receiving security updates in the coming years. And because of that, we'll need to require, we'll need to purchase new licenses. We may choose to do that closer to twenty twenty-nine when the licenses expire. We may also choose to do do it sooner with the hardware refresh. That's a TBD, kind of depends on the cost of the hardware refresh and some other factors. The Oracle contract for Oracle PeopleSoft or ERP, that that product has had some unanticipated expense during the past year because we had a recurring contract. But then we also need to pay them based on our budget. And as our budget increases, then we also need to pay them additional fees to license their product. So we assume that it's going to be next year what it was this year. And so I think if our budget doesn't increase, then potentially, you know, we won't need as much. But there's a little bit extra in there, assuming that there's going to be additional licensing required. Laserfish, we continue to expand Laserfish usage year over year. That's a similar situation where the more users who use the product, the more of the license costs. And so we've continued to increase our our utilization there and seen some additional costs that were beyond budget. So we added additional expense to the budget for that this year, roughly twenty-five thousand dollars. And that also has an additional factor because they're changing from a perpetual model to a subscription model. As they move to a subscription model, they want an annual or monthly recurring revenue. And that model may change or may change our our fee structure. So the costs are likely to go up, but TBD. We're postponing as long as we can. And it's not clear on when when we're going to need to make that move. Then the final thing is that we're going to need some professional services for PeopleSoft. So as we work to optimize, modernize that product and build the expertise, the and have expertise available. We're going to need additional services to do that. So there were funds put in to do that. And there was also funds put in to migrate from the current Microsoft, from the current email service to a future email service with Microsoft. So as we move to Teams, we want to make sure that we're going to have to do records discovery one way there. And we can also, if we move our data out of Barracuda to Microsoft, we could do it in a single method and potentially be more efficient. So that's going to require some work to do the migration afterwards. It's probably going to be it'll it'll take less labor to continue supporting that and supporting records requests. But the initial work to get the data moved is going to take some effort. And so there's funding put in for that. So the funds you see for the twenty twenty-six year are increased for the additional professional services for PeopleSoft and for Microsoft in twenty twenty-seven and out years, that's the additional licensing required for the Oracle and for Laserfish. Lots of details there. I'll stop and take any questions.
It's a technology is an ever-moving target. It's trying to keep up with it. You know, one of the things we found that I always found frustrating and 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 you touched on it just a little bit, let's 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 talk Teams. Because when we switch over to Teams, Teams will do all these other things, but you also have other products that do the, there's a lot of redundant things that you can use different products to do the same thing. So you're paying a a bill for, you know what I'm saying? And so we we kind of took it kind of slow. We did it with one thing and then slowly tried to merge other things into the the teams and get rid of some of the others. But I found that a lot in a lot of services in the in the financial area, you buy it and oh, yeah, it'll do all this stuff. We'll have a product that does that. And it's how how do you bring all those together? So you're you're, it seems like you're always spending redundant money on other products to do things that one product will do, but it it takes time to move everything over to the other.
It does take time to modernize and, you know, there's certainly some who want to be on the bleeding edge, right? And at the forefront and, you know, they require that. I don't think the county requires that. So we haven't found that, you know, it's going to make our services that much better if we're on the bleeding edge and there's a cost and a risk to doing that. So generally speaking, we've been laggards historically. And I would say in some cases, we're fifteen or twenty years behind the edge of technology and the way things are being done. So while I don't think we need to be on the bleeding edge, I think there's times where we probably need to be a little bit further ahead. And that's where the modernization comes from. We can do that and over time, get rid of the redundancies. So initially, for example, there are some redundancies. We get we get cloud storage from Microsoft for every user. We're not using it. One of the things we want to do in the coming years, for example, in the modern workplace is start using that storage for every user. It's a lot easier. We don't have to pay for backups on people's laptops and we don't have to worry about if their laptop is destroyed because if it's already backed up in Microsoft and it's already available in the cloud, if we need to, if if they lose or break their laptop, they drop it. It's, we still have access to the data. It also adds some efficiencies where when we migrate laptops, migrate workstations for a user, it now takes hours to do that because it takes time to copy the data from one system to another and set up applications. Once you use the what I call modern Microsoft method, it takes minutes. It's much faster. We spend a lot of time rolling out computers every summer because it takes hours per device. If we can move that down to minutes and we can get additional benefits and we're not paying for it because we already are paying additional for it. You know, it's a win. And that's the type of things that we're looking for is opportunities to take advantage of things that we already have. Use it so that it creates a better workplace and do it without additional cost.
Yeah, a couple of other things. And I don't mean to take all your time, but I I'm curious on a a couple through one comment you made on the Teams where you don't have to share files. We went to that. You could access that file. We could all work on it and they saw updates instantaneously. You could, it was, you know, a lot of times it's, oh, we got to change and do something new. But once you get used to it, it was it was pretty darn easy instead of sending files to everybody, say, hey, I made a change here. What do you, what do you see? The other thing I'm curious about in this, I don't know that I had much to do with here, but this whole thing with the satellite internet and versus, there's a big push to get broadband out in all these remote areas and I'm going, well, I use Starlink up there. I don't need them to put an orange cable up my road anymore. You know, that type of thing? And I'm I'm hearing rumors or I've read some stuff where they're working on. You know, I probably not putting this right, but they're working on an application that phone companies could put in their phone that their calls will go through satellite, not through the towers, and you can get phone service basically anywhere. So I, where do you think the future leads us down there? I mean, they're out putting cable up kind of West Side Highway now and I'm going, why are you doing this? Because we got, anybody can hook into the satellites.
Yeah, the way I look at that is even when Wi-Fi was available in homes, you know, fifteen years ago-ish, right? It was not nearly as reliable as it is today. And so I suspect something similar is going to happen with satellite phone service where it's going to be available or even cell phones, you know, twenty and thirty years ago, right? So they were not nearly as as reliable as available as they are today. And so I think that's going to be the case with satellite internet and using mobile phones through through satellites as opposed to through local towers. So it's not an area that I know a ton about, but just a little bit I know that's kind of the way that I look at it.
Are businesses starting to, we talked about our Wi-Fi down below. And I know our Wi-Fi probably comes through cable in in here, fiber optics or something like that. Are you seeing business starting to use like the satellite type stuff?
Absolutely. Yeah, there there's there's definitely residential options and there's commercial business options or or options for government. And so there's there's definitely use, whether it's on the battlefield or whether it's for us at the landfill, for example, you know, where it's hard to get to and costly to string cable. It is definitely a variable viable option. And so I've I've seen it used as a alternate service because it's not necessarily dependent upon tobacco. I've also seen it used for remote locations on islands, for example. Personally know and talked to somebody who used it in Guam, for example, you know, and how do you get, how do you get internet to Guam? Undersea cable and it's very costly. There's just lots of challenges there, but even within the island, there's there's challenges. So there's definitely, it has its place and it gets used for both residential and commercial. I don't know the percentages, but it's pretty significant for commercial.
Lot of changes.
Yeah, I I guess one of the things that you said that I'm wondering, like, just for example, if if we have a system that's ten years behind that we're trying to catch up, are we catching up faster than the technology is going forwards? In other words, next year, are we still going to be ten years behind? Even though we move a year forward, are we going to move forward fast enough that next year we're only five years behind? Or twenty years behind? Which way is that going to go?
Yeah, I think it depends on the investment and it depends on the specific technology we're talking about. One of the ones that comes to mind and that I've been referring to in different ways is how we store our data. So our data currently is stored in the building. It's stored in large storage devices. And that's where all of the data is, with the exception of what people store on their laptops. And there's probably data that's unprotected on lots of people's laptops and workstations. Sometimes they'll store it on a network. Sometimes they'll store it on a network drive, et cetera. What we want to do is move that to the next method, right? The next method is storing that in OneDrive, storing that in SharePoint, storing that in Azure. And as we do that, initially, it starts with the endpoint with small pockets of data that are hard to get to. That's the, that's the easy, quick win. The, the far end of that spectrum is the centralized data that's in the server room, moving that to the cloud. And so if we move that and we do that and move that to centralized storage while we're moving small pockets into the cloud. Do I think that five years from now that will be outdated or that there will be a new thing? No, I don't. I think that we'll be moving to the latest thing. And when you move to SaaS services, which is what, what this is effectively, we're, we're talking about is moving it to a service. Those services automatically update and automatically require that you follow along with their, their latest version. You know, you don't have an option when, when historically, when you get a software program and you have to install it, you run a CD or you download it and you run on your computer, that sort of thing. It doesn't always update on your own. The new model, kind of like a SaaS service or something that's in the cloud, they update it for you. They maintain it for you. They're running the updates. They're making sure that you're on the latest version. It's closer to what you're experiencing with, you know, a, a modern phone. Where Android and iOS download updates and all you got to do is say, yes, you know, reboot my phone. And once a month or once every few months, you get that. They're making it super easy to stay on the latest version and they're making it very difficult to, to fall behind. So that's good and bad. It's good because you stay on the latest version. It's helpful to, to keep in a modernized state. It's, it's sometimes difficult because if for some reason you don't want to make that move, if for some reason you were using a feature or methodology that you depend on that might be changed in the future one, or you might have to test for compatibility. You have to invest that work or deal with the ramifications if you don't test ahead of time. Because sometimes it doesn't go as well as it's, as it's planned, you know, it's, it's forced. The upgrade is forced. So you're forced to deal with the ramifications of that upgrade. Almost always it's good, but sometimes it's not.
Okay. Yeah, good, good question. Don't like to feel like we're behind all the time, yeah.
Feel like I'm on a hamster wheel.
I know. Okay. Interesting. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so again, I'm here to tell you I have another idea, another suggestion. When we look at the, and at this presentation, we see that we're going to be utilizing some of the IT reserves in which we're planned for related to the infrastructure about to the tune of about two million dollars in the next two to three years. And we actually are sitting on, after we pull some of the funds off and move them over to the Sheriff's Equipment Replacement Fund. We're currently sitting at four point six million dollars in our IT reserve. And we know we have a little over at least two million dollars committed right here. So my suggestion and recommendation is that we take about a million five of the IT reserve funds, move it over for purposes of operating funds. And then that would allow us to reduce bills to all of our departments, our internal service billings. And would end up saving, for example, in the general fund about a million dollars for the year. It's a one-time concept. And so I present that to you to discuss and give me some direction if you would like to proceed looking at that as a way to help our general fund.
So we take it down some, but we keep enough funds in there to take care of all these budget stuff.
Yes.
And how fast does it, over the next two to three years, how fast would it grow back?
Replenish it.
How, yeah, how fast would replenish?
That's dependent upon what we would decide in the cost allocation, how much right now.
Well, the cost allocation part of that is what
Helps fund, put, put it in reserve. Right now for twenty twenty six, we had made the decision, we would, since we were sufficiently funded in the reserve, we wouldn't put any new funds in for twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven. We would start back up putting aside money every year to go towards the reserve. So right now, we're not going to be building it up any larger than it already is.
Okay. How much, right, the way things are right now, roughly how much does the reserve grow every year?
It has been in the past growing at about three to four hundred thousand per year is what we were setting aside historically.
And so when you said we would reduce the costs to the other departments to, to the tune of saving a million dollars, how much would that reduce it? Uh, what, how, how am I going to say this question? I don't know how to put that together.
Um, my, my recommendation is one point five million reduction of the reserve. That would take your reserve down. It's currently estimated to be about four point six. It'd take you down to three point one. And then you've got two million. Yeah, so it would take you, it would take your reserve number down.
Okay, I'll think about that.
Wait, I, I, I heard about this for the first time today. So just the thoughts that come to mind off, off the top and I'd like to give it more thought also, but in previous estimates, the cost to replace and the ERP PeopleSoft product, I think was in the ballpark of two million dollars for the software, three million dollars for consulting. And we expect that we're going to need to do that in the next five. I don't know. I think I, I would, I personally expect that we're going to need to do that in the next five to ten years. So the cost of the software, that may go to a monthly or annual fee. It's hard to know, you know, I think that's likely that between now and then, everybody wants an annual fee. They want you to pay for their subscription model. They don't want you to buy the software and then pay them a small annual fee. So do you need to have the two million dollars in the budget for that? Probably not. But I do think you need to anticipate having the money to do the migration to another product, the three million dollars. So I think the question that I'm asking is, are we going to have the three million dollars to do that when we need to? And are we going to have the money there to replace other assets and make changes as needed?
And we'd still do a probably yearly evaluation of what's coming up and that would affect how we build the other departments.
And yeah, I'm not recommending, I'm recommending that you continue to do your review, annual review with your cost allocation. And that's when you evaluate, what is it? And that's why I had told Travis, I thought discussing a five, three to five year plan would be really important. Because we have built our reserve up to such a large number right now. And to replace, based upon what we, the data we have, to replace everything in our servers, switches, things like that, we had anticipated and a telephone system was about four million dollars. So we have more than enough to replace all the IT infrastructure. It's just those unknowns as far as going to another system, needing some consulting, things like that. So, but I, I do believe it's a good practice. We've been doing it every year, looking at our reserve balance, looking at our allocations and making sure that we're looking at what's on the horizon. And having a five, looking at a five-year plan like he's, he's put together here.
Well, even if the software licensing goes to a annual fee, the consulting fee isn't going to be any different to make that transition, right? So that roughly two million dollars is going to be whether it goes to an annual license or licensing fee or a one-time purchase, you're still going to have that consulting fee that's not going to go away. It'll only get worse if not better.
Right. I, I think we should anticipate that it's going to be a three million dollar fee or, or potentially more. I think it's unknown, but I think that's a probably the safest assumption I could give, given what I've known of the past work that was done.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not opposed to your suggestion. I think we should, I, this is one of those type of sessions. I think Commissioner Rader should also have a voice in.
So, yeah, so I'm, I'm bringing these ideas, ideas up because we're, we're counting down. We've got about
Yeah.
Um, at the end of this month, we're going to talk about where the budget is and another update, preliminary update of the budget. So I'm just bringing these up as they come about.
Till at that point in time, you'd like, you'd want your,
Yeah, I'd want some decisions then.
You'll bring those back and we should be prepared to make a decision. Okay.
Right. So I'm bringing, bringing ideas up for, and unfortunately, they're all, my ideas right now are all one-time ideas because they're less, they're easier to implement too, but so.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything else for the budget workshops other than this. So we're finished.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Yep, thank you for listening.
Ms. Kim, I see you're on the list. We got a couple. Fair board people?
Good morning.
Good morning. Both reappointments, Carol Serin and Mary Grochow?
Yeah, Mary Jo Groco.
Groco?
Groco, I believe is how to say it.
You've been working with them for a while, it looks like.
Uh, yes, yep.
You're okay?
Yep. And I should have a third coming soon that was also set to expire this month.
You're okay, I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay. How many do, sit on that now?
Seven.
Seven on the fair board and how many on rodeo?
Nine. No, I'm sorry, eleven on the rodeo board.
Eleven on rodeo board?
And the difference is when they split, so the rodeo board used to be a subcommittee of the fair boards. And at the time, the subcommittee was eleven people and they wanted to have their own board. So they became a board of eleven. So that's, that's the difference between the two.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah. That's all I have.
That, that was quick and easy. I know we made you sit, but it was good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was easy. Keep smiling.
Last thing I see you, we have red ribbon. Oh, you changed. Well, no, red ribbon week, they want a proclamation. Okay. I know it. You changed it. And I'll be out of, out of town. So I won't make it. I was, I had it on my calendar and you guys changed it. Let's see, Kelly sent a little bit to us on this red ribbon week. It's like this, this coalition's been working with drug issues amongst kids for many, many years. And they want us to do a proclamation.
Yeah.
Did you see a little bit on it?
I glanced at it, but I didn't read all the way through it. I don't have any problem with the intent of it.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't find anything that had any problem with, so. I'll tell her we're okay with that. Okay. I think that's it then. Jessica had nothing today, so we're all good. Okay, we're no meeting tomorrow, so we won't be together again until next, next week. All right, we will adjourn. Thank you.